That's seven oh two. Before we get started tonight, first let me welcome you to tonight's regular meeting of the Woburn City Council. Remind you that tonight's meeting is being recorded and broadcast. I'd ask that you please silence your cellphones at this time, so it's not a distraction. And if you could please join me in rising for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
Counselor Campbell.
Present.
Counselor DeMers.
Present.
Counselor Dillon.
Present.
Counselor DeMambro.
Present.
Counselor Farulo.
Present.
Counselor Gaitley, absent. Counselor Mercer Bruin.
Present.
Counsel Viola.
Present.
President Concannon.
Present. I note that Counselor Gaitley is not with us tonight. He's not feeling well. We send him our best wishes. I'm sure he's watching on TV. We look forward to having him back with us real soon.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to dispense with the reading of the previous meeting's general and to approve.
Second. Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Eight zero one.
First item on the agenda is a presentation by Powers &amp; Sullivan regarding the end-of-year audit results. A communication was dated March 2nd, 2023, from his honor, Mayor Scott Galvin, as well as there are three handouts from Powers &amp; Sullivan that are on your desk as well.
Make a motion that all communications be received and made part of the permanent record.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to suspend the rules to allow his honor Mayor Galvin to speak.
Second.
Or his designees.
Or his designees.
Motion is second, to suspend the rules to allow his honor the mayor or designees to speak on this matter. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. President, members of the city council, thank you for having us in tonight.
We've been trying to get this presentation to you for quite some time now. A little bit delinquent on it, so we're going to be having, this is the end of June of '21 results. We'll be back around, but we'll be back at budget time for the June of '22. We have strong results from the end of '21, and we expect to see the same for '22. Tonight we have Charles Doherty here from the auditor's office, as well as Tim Donovan from the Treasury, integral part of the financial team that I know you guys work with on a regular basis, so I want to thank them for their work as well. Tonight we have Frank Soretti from Powers &amp; Sullivan, and Ben Edsit from Powers &amp; Sullivan. They'll be making a presentation. It's about a 10-minute presentation, then there'll be time for question and answers after. Any questions for me?
Any questions at this time?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thanks for having us here tonight. As the mayor said, I'm Frank Soretti from Powers &amp; Sullivan, Ben Edsit. Just like to start off by thanking the mayor, city auditor, treasurer, collector, the city finance team, and the school finance team for all the cooperation and assistance that we had during the course of the audit. Everybody was very professional and courteous, answered all of our questions, got us all the information that we needed, which we appreciated. We are responsible for conducting the audit in accordance with U.S. generally accepted auditing standards, government auditing standards, and also the uniform guidance, which relates to the federal awards that you receive. Management is responsible for the significant selecting, significant accounting policies. Those can be found in Note 1 of the financial statements. There were no new policies implemented during fiscal '21, and there were no changes to the existing policies. There's some significant estimates included in the financial statements, mainly for the, or the most significant ones were for the net other post-employment benefit liability, the net pension liability, the compensated absences liability, and depreciation on fixed assets. We reviewed the assumptions and factors that went into those estimates, and we found those to be reasonable in relationship to the financial statements. We didn't encounter any difficulties with management in performing the audit. We did not have to propose any audit adjustments to correct any errors in the city's books and records. The books and records were in very good shape. We did not have any disagreements with management over any accounting matters and auditing matters. And in some cases, management might decide to consult with outside accountants and auditors about accounting and auditing matters, and if they do, the other firm that they consult with is required to just check with us to make sure that they have all the relevant facts and circumstances related to any matters that they might be hired to take a look at, but we're not aware that that happened. So those are just some standard things that we're required to communicate to you. As far as the audit is concerned, the FY '21 audit results, we were able to issue an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. That's the best opinion you can get. It means the financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. The reporting deadlines were met. The information that we received was accurate. And as I mentioned, all of our responses were provided timely, the responses to our questions. And we didn't identify any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal controls, which is very good. Cash is being reconciled, which is one of the most important internal controls, and we found the cash reconciliations to be complete and accurate. We found the receivables to be fully reconciled. That's another really important internal control. We found that there were good controls over the budget process, how the budget was formulated, how the budget was maintained. As far as your fund balances go for the general fund, you ended the year with a total fund balance of $65.7 million. 7.7 of that was committed. Of that, 4.3 relates to your affordable housing stabilization fund, and another 3.4 million relates to continuing appropriations. You also had $709,000 of encumbrances, and that left you with $57.3 million of unassigned fund balance. That's really an important number to the rating agencies. You ended up at about 36% of your budget, and about an $8.2 million increase over the prior year, so you added to it. And you've been consistently adding to it. I looked back as far as 2011, when the balance was $19.8 million, and about 18% of the budget. So you've steadily been increasing your reserves, and it puts the city in a really strong position, and it will allow you to weather, you know, an unexpected storm that might come up, and it gives you a lot of financial flexibility, and it also allows you to maintain that AAA bond rating, which helps you in various ways. From a budgetary result standpoint, you had a $2.1 million general fund surplus. Your revenues came in over budget by 4.8 million. Expenditures were under budget by 8.4. Those surpluses were offset by the use of $8.9 million of free cash. 3.5 million of that was used to reduce the tax rate. 5 million was transferred into your general stabilization fund, and another $375,000 was used for a roadway study. You also transferred $750,000 into your OPEB trust fund, and so that was another significant contribution into the OPEB trust fund. And you're starting to develop a pretty significant balance there, which is great, because that helps you to get a higher discount rate, which will help you to lower the liability and fund it. As far as the single audit is concerned, that's the report on federal awards, one of the reports that you have there in front of you. That's required for any entities that expend more than $750,000 in federal funds in a year. You're required to undergo a single audit. The city expended $8 million in federal funds during the year. Majority of that related to the coronavirus relief fund and the education stabilization fund, which are both programs under the CARES Act. And that was about 62% of your total expenditures. Those are the two programs that we tested, and we had no findings in question costs related to any of that testing. Were able to issue unmodified opinions on compliance, and there were no internal control deficiencies related to that. So you did a really good job of managing those funds. As far as the management letter is concerned, there were seven comments in there that carried over from the prior year. The first two related to compensated absences and timeliness of actuarial information for OPEB were considered to be resolved at the end of '21. And then the comment on purchase orders, there's been progress made on that, and it's still kind of a work in process, but there's progress being made, and the other four comments are still in progress as well. And as far as the FY '22 audit goes, we're substantially complete on that. We're expecting to receive the OPEB valuation report, other post-employment benefits liability, what that stands for, valuation. That's one of those significant liabilities that we were talking about. Once we get that, we'll be able to book that, get that recorded on the financial statements, and we have to do some testing of the census data and a little bit more wrap-up on our payroll testing. And otherwise, that's really about all we have left to do on the FY '22 audit, so that should be wrapping up soon. And that's my overview for you, and if you have any questions, we can try to answer them for you.
Questions or comments from the council? Seeing none. Oh, Counselor Dillon.
So, on a scale A, B, C, D, where are we at here?
You mean as far as your financial position?
Correct.
AAA, so you're A, A, A.
I just want to hear.
You're in a very strong financial position, very good reserves, yep.
Counselor Mercer Bruin.
Earlier in your presentation, you commented that our position, we're well positioned to weather the storm, and I think we saw that before even the COVID dollars started pouring in from the federal government. We were able to weather that storm, so nothing you said here was a surprise, but it's awfully nice to hear it. So, thank you.
Yes, I know there's been a lot of work done between the council and the mayor to try to, you know, this doesn't happen by accident, so there's a lot of thought and planning and everything that goes into it, so it's paid off.
Well, it was nice to see you again. We'll see you at budget time for the FY '22 presentation.
Nice to see you too.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Anything else, Mr. Mayor?
I think a motion to return to the regular order of business.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion that the matter be placed on file.
Second.
Motion is second that this matter be placed on file. All in favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda we have is an order creating the opioid settlement stabilization fund. A communication was received from his honor, the mayor Scott Galvin, dated March 2nd, 2023, as well as an order.
Make a motion that all communications be received and made part of the permanent record.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion that the matter be referred to the committee on finance.
Second.
Motion is second that this matter be referred to the committee on finance. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is an order to transfer the sum of $91,110.68 from the mayor's salary adjustment account to library salaries account. There was a communication dated March 2nd, 2023, from his honor, the mayor Scott Galvin, as well as an order.
Make a motion that all communications be received and made part of the permanent record.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion that the matter be referred to the committee on finance.
Second.
Motion is second that this matter be referred to the committee on finance. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is an order to transfer the sum of $468,478.48 from mayor's salary adjustment account to police salaries account. Communication dated March 2nd, 2023, was received from his honor, the mayor Scott Galvin, as well as the order.
Make a motion that all communications be received and made part of the permanent record.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion that the matter be referred to the committee on finance.
Second.
Motion is second that this matter be referred to the committee on finance. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is an order to authorize a man to accept grant share from IndustryPlex trustee council in the amount of $124,700 and $235,000, $235,000 from North American Wetlands Council for the design and permitting of the Shaker Glen Restoration Project, as well as $93,900 from the IndustryPlex trustee council, and $80,635 from the North American Wetlands Council for the design and permitting of the Scally Dam Fishway Project. A communication was received from his honor, Mayor Scott Galvin, dated March 2nd, 2023, as well as the order.
Make a motion that all communications be received and made part of the permanent record.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion that the order be adopted.
Second.
Motion is second that this order be adopted. All in favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is an order to authorize a man to accept grant share from municipal vulnerability preparedness in the amount of $271,425, and additional congressional AMAC in the amount of $259,000 for the design and permitting of Hurl Park. A communication was received from his honor, the mayor Scott Galvin, dated March 2nd, 2023, as well as an order.
Make a motion that all communications be received and made part of the permanent record.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion that the order be adopted.
Second.
Motion is second that this order be adopted. All in favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is a communication regarding the proposed strike legislation by Massachusetts General Court. Communication was received from his honor, Mayor Scott Galvin, dated March 2nd, 2023.
Make a motion that all communications be received and made part of the permanent record.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion that the matter be placed on file.
Second.
Motion is second that this matter be placed on file. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item under new petitions, the petitions by James L. McEwen Boys and Girls Club of Woburn, Charles Gardner Lane, for a special event permit to allow a road race and health walk starting at Charles Gardner Lane and along area streets on May 7th, 2023.
Make a motion that the special event permit be approved.
Second.
Motion is second that this special event permit be approved. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is a petition by Nishober Learning Group for a special event permit to allow a five-key run slash walk for autism at Han Pond on June 4th, 2023.
Make a motion that the special event permit be approved.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda under new petitions, petitions for renewal of common carrier licenses for the following transaction: Corporate Shuttle, Five Wheeling Avenue, and M&amp;L Transit System, Inc., 6th Olympia Avenue.
Make a motion that the matter be referred to the committee on public safety and license.
Second.
Motion is second that this matter be referred to the committee on public safety and license. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is petition by AccuTemp Engineering for a special permit pursuant to Section 57B of the 1985 Woburn zoning ordinances as amended to allow for overnight parking of two vehicles, one rack body and one box van, at 271 Salem Street, building each.
I'll make a motion that the matter be referred to a public hearing.
Second.
Motion is second that this matter be referred to a public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is petition by One Twenty Commerce Apartments LLC care of Toll Brothers Apartment Living to amend Section 23 of the Woburn zoning ordinances to allow for solar photovoltaic systems in the Commerce Way Corridor overlay district.
Make a motion that the matter be referred to a public hearing.
Second.
Second.
Motion is second that this matter be referred to a public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is a request by Paul McElhenney Jr. and Barbara Locke to discuss WTA updates.
Make a motion to suspend Rule 35 to allow for the two petitioners for citizens' participation to speak tonight for five minutes each.
Second.
There's a motion is second to suspend the rules. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. McElhenney, Ms. Locke, welcome.
Good evening, councilors, and thank you for allowing us to speak tonight. I am going to read from my notes, because I have a lot to do, and I want to respect your time to get back to your regular order of business. Again, my name is Paul McElhenney, 14 Canterbury Road, second vice president of the Woburn Teachers' Association. I am a proud educator, currently in my 22nd year of teaching, and like all Woburn teachers, I truly love my job, my community, and the students that we serve. The WTA is composed of over 630 members. Our members are also coawanus members, Lions members, Rotary members, to name just a few of our prestigious organizations here in Woburn. Our members volunteer at countless city events. We volunteer at our city churches, teaching CCD. We coach Woburn youth soccer. We coach Woburn youth hockey. We coach multiple sports for Woburn Recreation. In short, many are fully immersed in and committed to making our community a better place to live, work, and raise a family. 59% of our members are citizens of Woburn. We are taxpayers and voters. 54% of our members grew up in Woburn and chose to teach here in the city we love and take pride in. Over 60% of Woburn educators still have parents, brothers, sisters, and other relatives that also live in our great city. All these individuals who are also taxpayers and voters. I genuinely speak from the heart when I say that I do not know of one teacher that does not go above and beyond for all students. I see it every day, and I invite all elected officials to spend an entire day in any one of our classrooms and witness what we do. I guarantee it would be a life-changing experience. Schools today are vastly different than when many of us attended, and we have all worked tirelessly to adjust to ensure that every student has an equitable and meaningful education. In spite of the continual efforts, continuous efforts of educators, morale has never been lower than in the past two years. Negotiations have always been confrontational. However, this particular go-around was truly discouraging and demoralizing. The WTA was bombarded with a plethora of demands, many of which were disheartening and unfair. And yet we accepted several in order to show a genuine willingness to bargain and negotiate. On the administrative side, barely any of our proposals were entertained, let alone accepted. In fact, one school committee member even told us that in order to receive the cost of living adjustment they were offering, we had to give something in return. That is simply not negotiation, negotiating. That is coercion. That is blackmail. The icing on the cake was when our membership was told that we are all replaceable. What a shocking choice of words for settling negotiations. The existing low morale of the WTA quickly morphed into anger, and that anger transformed into a powerful sense of unity. Unity against a mounting pressure of continual disrespect and a pervasive unwillingness to listen and engage in meaningful dialogue. On January 27th, the WTA overwhelmingly voted to go on strike. This was not an easy decision that any single member took lightly. Furthermore, we were not coerced or even influenced by the Massachusetts Teachers' Association, as it was assumed and disseminated by some of our elected officials. This decision was entirely our own and was based on our genuine desire to create better conditions for both our valuable staff and our students. Unfortunately, during the strike, the city side of negotiations was not operated in good faith. WTA members were prepared to start bargaining sessions immediately following the strike announcement and suggested meeting promptly Saturday morning. The city side declined this offer and agreed to meet on Sunday, wasting a full day of bargaining. At the meeting on Sunday, one city side member stated that they could not meet on Saturday because they had to attend a family members' basketball game. This statement speaks volumes about how important the education of the thousands of Woburn students is to some of our elected officials. As bargaining commenced, it became exceedingly clear that the sessions were labeled with an undercurrent of vitriol from the city side. After the first day, the mayor and his bargaining team refused to meet face-to-face, and a mediator was utilized. This led to an extremely long, this led to extremely long wait times, sometimes even hours, before a new proposal was sent back from the city side. In addition, the mayor was continually late to negotiations, and he and the administration also chose to end early each day. The WTA was willing and fully prepared to bargain from early morning to late into the evening each day, with the full intent of getting back into the classroom with our students as soon as possible. Moreover, the mediator was not able to work on Saturday, February 5th, and thus led to an increased delay that was completely out of our control, one that could have been avoided if the mayor and his team were willing to negotiate face-to-face and in good faith on February 5th.
Paul, by my clock, you're over five minutes, but if you have a summary comment you'd like to make, we'll give you that.
Yeah, this is it. Okay, thanks. After all these hurdles and challenges, it was simply appalling to receive a bill for $225,000, especially considering that it genuinely seemed as though Mayor Galvin dragged out negotiations excessively in order to bankrupt the WTA. Due to the aforementioned statements about the delays and missing days during negotiations, we respectfully request that the city council audit committee and the city council finance committee examine this list of charges and work to lessen, if not expunge, this exaggerated bill. In closing, I would be remiss if I didn't recognize the uplifting and inspiring outpouring of support from members of the Woburn community during this trying time. My fellow educators and I will continue to be the backbone of our great school system, and we will never stop advocating and fighting for what is right for all of our staff and students. We are united in our mission and refuse to be bullied into silence or complacency. I thank you for your time and allowing for me to speak tonight.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilors. And again, thank you for your time tonight. We appreciate the time you allotted to the WTA. My comments will reiterate what Paul has said. On January 27th, the Woburn Teachers' Association made a very difficult decision for a strike, to vote to strike. That was not an easy decision, and we did not take it lightly. But it wasn't something that we decided in a month or even a year. It has been a decade that I have been involved in these negotiations, and it was not only illegal, it was necessary. And to this day, I have no regrets, and we have no regrets on what we did. It was necessary. And that decision was only validated by what ensued that next week. The unfair labor antics were embarrassing for the city and downright mean. There was no intent for us to get back to school. If there were, we would have been there on Saturday morning and been done with it and back to school on Monday. There was an agenda, an agenda by this mayor that nobody can disagree with. So that Sunday, when we met, we knew we had to sign a return-to-work agreement that we didn't agree with. Our MOAs were all set, our COLAs were agreed on, but this return-to-work agreement, which is completely extortion, we had to sign so we would get back to school on Monday, because I can promise you, we wouldn't be back to school right now if it was the mayor's decision. So we signed this agreement unwillingly, knowing that we were having to pay $75,000 this year, $50,000 next year, $50,000 next year, and $50,000 next year. Nearly a quarter of a million dollars we are going to pay to this city. Our families donating money, people paying $100 for a cookie, businesses doing all they can do to help us, and we're going to turn that over to a $61 million savings account? What are we doing? What does a AAA bond rating mean when this is what's happening in this city? It needs to stop. I have for you the return agreement, the return-to-work agreement that you may want to look at, and also the itemization of the really $300,000, which we feel much of it is extortion.
Make a motion that we receive the documents and make them part of the permanent record.
Second.
Second. Motion is second to receive these documents and make them part of the permanent record. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I will end in, oh, sorry. Sorry, Lindsey. Here's the, um... I do believe there'll be many questions on this document.
She's taking minutes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You all set, Lindsey?
Yep.
Thank you. So I'll close in saying that I-
You all set, Lindsey?
Yep.
Thank you. So I'll close in saying that I do believe there'll be many questions on this where we are more than willing to sit down and go through it item by item, but we, again, respectfully ask that you expunge these fees, these fines, or better yet, you forgive them. And thank you again for your time tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Make a motion to return to the regular order of business?
Second.
Motion second to return to the regular order, all in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion that the matter be placed on file?
Second.
Motion second that this matter be placed on file, all in favor?
Next item on the agenda we have under communications and reports is a communication from the Woburn Retirement Board regarding 5% local COLR option.
Make a motion that the communication be received and made part of the permanent record?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion that the matter be referred to the committee on liaison.
Second.
There's a motion second that this matter be referred to the committee on liaison, all in favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda we have under motions, orders, and resolutions is a resolve for multiple sclerosis awareness month. And I believe Counselor Viola would like to read it into the record.
Counselor Viola.
Thank you, Mr. President. Whereas multiple sclerosis, MS, is an autoimmune disease of the central nervous system that can cause symptoms throughout the body ranging from difficulty walking to changes in memory or thinking abilities. It is believed that the immune system attacks the myelin sheath that would normally protect nerve fibers in the brain, spinal cord, and optic nerve. Myelin is the fatty material which protects and insulates nerves and acts as a protective coating. If myelin becomes damaged and/or destroyed, the scar tissue, known as sclerosis, disrupts electrical impulses between the brain and other parts of the body. And whereas, increased awareness and public education helps to educate the general public of the debilitating effects of multiple sclerosis and inspires funds for research, which is beneficial for developing treatments, looking for a cure or cause of MS, and helps those who are suffering from MS make decisions about their health care and there is no current cure. And whereas, over 1 million individuals are living with multiple sclerosis in the United States and over 2.5 million are living with MS worldwide. Studies have shown that MS is caused by an early exposure to some environmental trigger in genetically susceptible individuals. Since 1975, the number of individuals who are living with MS has more than doubled according to research. And whereas, the month of March has been designated as multiple sclerosis month, awareness month, in the week of March 12th to 19th, 2023. Now therefore, be it resolved, the City Council of the City of Woburn does hereby extend wishes of good health to all who are battling multiple sclerosis and urge all its residents to support charitable efforts of local organizations to help fight this terrible disease. Be it further resolved, the City Council of the City of Woburn do hereby urge all residents of Woburn to join in declaring March 2023 as multiple sclerosis awareness month in the City of Woburn.
And it's signed by all the councilors.
Very good. Thank you, Chuck.
Make a motion that the resolve be adopted?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion second to adjourn at 7:35, all in favor?
Aye.